Eighteen oh three or six oh three and we can call the meeting to order August fifteenth, six oh three P M. We can start off with changes to the agenda. I do have one. Pay orders have not been received in the mail. So unfortunately, we're going to have to move that to the next meeting. So that will be a deletion. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda?
The only thing I might have for you is depending on your pleasure, there is a need for an executive session. I don't know if you want that upfront or not. It is about a legal update. It might be good for you guys to have some information prior to the start of the meeting, but if you want to do the public business first and then do that at the end, you'll hopefully do that as well, whatever your pleasure is.
So if I'm understanding.
Yeah, she said that we should do.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say Rory. So do you feel we should do that before we move forward with public comment correspondence?
I mean, you could probably do the, I mean, maybe just you could do the public comment and correspondence, maybe before you get to the started old business though, maybe? I'm not sure. But I think the earlier the better for you guys to get some information.
Okay, so well then we'll move on to, so we will add that change. What we'll do is after public comment and correspondence, we'll do the executive session and then we can return from executive session and move on. Does that sound reasonable to folks? All right, so not hearing any objection, we can move on to, is there someone gonna say something? Nope. Okay, so we can move on to public comment. Does anyone have a public comment?
We do have a hand in the physical room here.
Um, so I had sent you an email and I know for public comment, you don't usually answer questions, but kind of want to put this out there in public comment. Um, so I had sent Bob an email asking if Jenna is licensed in Vermont. Um, I've heard there's potential for a second teacher. We're wondering if they're a licensed teacher. Has the second teacher ever worked in a classroom with elementary aged students? Um, the second teacher has. Has put ads on social media stating that he doesn't drive. So how will you fill the void when he can't get to the building? Um, what do you foresee as repercussions of a teacher who may not be able to get to a job he is hired for as an impact on the students who are already showing some impacts? Um, my other question is. Nobody's received anything as to what school looks like. We have two weeks. Nobody has received anything like these are your teachers. This is what the school year looks like. Um, we haven't heard anything about bus driver, bus schedule. In the past, the school board worked with the bus driver to determine who was coming to the school and what the route looked like. So I'm wondering if has anybody determined who's coming to the school and what the bus route is gonna look like? Cause two weeks.
Abby, I'm happy to take us to answering some of those if you want me to.
So what I would say though, since that's public comment and we have those are quite a few questions, um, if we can move on to correspondence, because I think maybe I'm wrong, Bob, you may be able to answer some of those right now, but some of that might be answered further on in the meeting. Right? So.
There's definitely elements of that that are on the agenda for later. That's correct.
So if you wouldn't mind maybe speaking to what isn't on the agenda that she had asked and then we can kind of then keep things moving?
All right. Well, staffing update is under new business. So I'll guess we'll answer staffing questions there if that works. Um, I remember bus and configuration. Those are the two themes.
Routes.
Bus situation and then the what's happening, what's it look like? Those are the two other themes. Am I missing anything? Okay, those are not on your agenda anywhere else. Abby, do you want me to attempt to answer those?
Go for it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so the, I think it was someone in the community sent me an email about gave me the information that the bus routes had been done by the board. I forward that information to the board and to Jenna, the new teaching principal. But I can't speak to what, if anything has happened of that yet. Um, I can, I can speak to the fact that the Jenna and I today have had a conversation about communicating with families around sort of what's gonna happen here, but first coming up with who's gonna be here. So that, because the numbers are significantly different than what we're anticipating, that could change what it looks like, right? So she's gonna be preparing a mailing or an emailing out to all the families that we know of who are either were registered or have expressed interest in. Receiving tuition money but weren't registered. Well, it's kind of vague the way I'm saying it, but I think everyone understands what I'm talking about. That sort of that collection of names, she now has a handle on. She has the communication for all those people and she's gonna be reaching out to find out what people's plans are so that then she can develop the strategy to move forward. But until the staffing stuff could be taken care of, we had to do some of the stuff first. So that's where I can answer those at this point. So I don't know if any of the board members or Jenna can answer the bus situation. That I don't know anything more on that.
I can add a little to the bus situation. So it's almost finalized, but it's not the bus route. So we have sort of a, you know, we have a guideline now. It's not much different than last year, but it's not ready to go out just yet. So it will be out shortly. And we did, I did send a letter to families introducing myself and saying that we'll send, we are gonna have an open house for students in person on the twenty fourth. I don't know if that's right. It's the Thursday before school starts. So they'll get to come in person to see it on their own and to meet me, to meet me and to meet Marco. So I was sort of waiting for Marco to be on board so that they can meet both of us when they came. So now we know. So that'll go under staffing updates. So, so we will have an open house as well and then we'll send out pictures. But there hasn't been a lot of change in the building. So there wasn't much to send out just yet.
And just one more question. You guys didn't forget the Weeland and Gray students when you did the bus route, correct?
They were on the bus. I mean, I didn't make the bus route, but they're still, it's still on there. Yeah, they're still on the same bus route.
Abby, you also have a hand up in Zoom land from a David and Sarah.
Uh, hey, I just wanna remind everyone that once the bus schedule goes out, that names and addresses will not be public information. It'll maybe just be addresses only or some other form of identification. That names and addresses together will not be.
Yeah, I mean, I could speak to how we did it in the West River District and it was addresses. Like here's, this address is where the bus stops, the intersection of these roads or this house or, but no names were included in that. I don't know what the history here has been, but that's how it's been done in other places I've been.
Awesome. Thank you.
One more question.
Crystal has one more.
Were you able to connect the school with Swift Reach? Because that was the issue. Wyndham has never been connected to Swift Reach.
Right. So one, one of the challenges of all of that communication piece from our end is that Power School is going away and Alma, the new school information system is coming in. That transition is, I don't, to be honest, I don't know if you have a login to that yet, but.
No, I got, I just started the training that I.
Yeah. So she's, she has to go through a training process with I T first to get training on that. But from what I've been told, all of the student data and all, and all of their historical data that's in there, that was in Power School. So if Wyndham used Power School for attendance and grades, for example, that information has been transferred to Alma, pair of contact information, emails, phone numbers, all those things. And there is a robo-call system and a robo-email system built into Alma, much like this K Swift, K twelve Swift, whatever it's called in Power School. So it's a similar program, different name, but that, that mechanism will still exist. And like I said at a previous meeting, the data is only as good as the data that we have. And the data that we have in it is data that moved from Power School into it. So I know that there was at least, for example, a board member who didn't get one of the emails because it was sent to an older personal email that they didn't access anymore. So my, the communication list that Jenna has from somebody, I forget who even gave that to you, it was Abby. Oh, so Bridget. So Bridget gave Jenna the list of contact information that she knew to be as accurate as possible. And that's the list that Jenna will be using to communicate out the survey of what people are doing next year. So what we'll do is once we have an admin assistant in place, that person will cross-reference that list with the Alma list to make sure that they're one of the same. But yeah, but it's sort of garbage in, garbage out. So if the data was bad coming in, we're not gonna have the current info. So, but we, nothing we can do about that because we just made, did the merger. So we'll find out as we go. So I would say, if you, can you maybe give folks a timeline of when you think you'll be sending this email out so that if they don't get something from you by a certain time, they'll know to reach out maybe?
Sure. Tomorrow, it'll be tomorrow.
Sometime tomorrow.
Yeah.
So tomorrow's Wednesday. So by Thursday morning, if you haven't received something from Jenna and your family that currently has students here, then you should reach out to Jenna. Does that seem reasonable? That helps? Because that way if you didn't get it, you'll know that maybe your address is wrong or something. Does that answer your question, Crystal?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Back to you, Abby. No hands are up in Zoom land.
Okay. So since there's no more public comment, any correspondence, anyone wants to share? Okay, hearing none. We will move into, let's see here. I move to find that premature general public knowledge regarding pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body is or may be a party would put the board at substantial disadvantage because the school board is at risk of disadvantage discussed in the public. I make a motion. Oh, wait. So that's the first one's a motion. We gotta get a second on, correct? So can I get a second?
The first one, you have to move that that is an accurate statement. You have to get a majority of the board that agrees that that's an accurate statement. And then you make the motion to go into executive session. It's a two-part process.
Can I get a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All, all in favor. So I, not all in favor. If you are in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. I make a motion for the board to enter executive session under Title I, Section three thirteen of the Vermont statutes, legal consultation.
That's what I figured.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You have a hand raised, Abby?
Yeah, we have to know the reason why you're going into executive session. You must state it publicly.
They, they did, Russ. They said that premature general knowledge regarding pending or probable civil litigation is the reason.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep. All right. So, um, I am going to, at this point, move everybody into the waiting room and then Jenna and the rest of the crew here will step out into the hall and Dan will remain here with me.
Okay, it is eighteen fifty-three, six fifty-three, and we are out of executive session and no action will be taken. So we will move on to old business. Approval of the minutes. So we'll go through one at a time. Um, did you guys receive the amended January seventeenth minutes? There was a K missing. Okay. Um, and so I'll make a motion to approve the January seventeenth.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, those minutes are approved.
Abby, just a quick question on that. So I, those are minutes, I think maybe Rory holds the originals on those. Is that correct?
The originals?
Well, whoever, who was taking minutes at this time?
That was my, those are my minutes.
Your minutes. Okay. Can you correct that and then send that? Because we don't have a, we don't have an editable version of that to correct and then post.
It was sent to you guys.
The edit, oh, with the correction was sent?
With the correction.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All right. All right. And did you include Sue on that? Or was that just me?
Yes, sir. Nope. Oh, everybody and Sue.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I misunderstood.
No worries. Um, moving on to the May thirtieth minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Did you get an aye from you, Rory? Did I get it? Rory, did you say aye or not? The minutes?
Aye, I got disconnected.
Okay. Okay, those are approved. Um, did June twentieth minutes, I moved to approve those. May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Um, the July, I moved to approve the July twelfth minutes. May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the July eighteenth, I moved for the July eighteenth minutes to be approved. May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And I moved to approve the July twenty-seventh minutes. May I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we went through the minutes. So those are all set. Uh, pay orders was removed. So now we're gonna move on to new business. So we'll start off with the principal report. Jenna, you are, you got the floor. All right.
Hello, everybody. Um, so I'll just summarize what I had sent out. Um, but the first order of business will be to announce that the most important thing I had to do in most recent time is to hire our other classroom teacher. And so I'm thrilled to be able to introduce you to Marco, who's, who's on board right now and who signed the contract today and was in the first day of teacher training. And Marco has a background in computer science and engineering and traveled a lot and he speaks a bunch of languages. He's very interesting person to talk to. And I know the kids are just gonna be enamored and excited to meet him. So we have a team and so now we just started working together today for teacher training and we're getting ready to go for the year. Uh, let's see. Um, for the administrative assistant position, we're still in the early stages, but we have some candidates and have interviewed one person so far and we're still looking at the pool, but we have a few more potential candidates. So that's moving and grooving. And then I'll just pop to academic proficiency. I only have a few updates now since Marco and I are just starting to work together. So one thing I can say that'll be a little different for teaching and learning next year for students is that we're gonna use a model where we tap into our expertise and I'll be focusing mostly on humanities and E L A and Marco will be teaching science and math. So your child, if you have a child in the school, will come to E L A and writing for me and then um, other subjects, you have science and math with Marco and they will stay generally with their grade levels groups in those two cohorts, but they'll have both of us teaching during the day. Uh, let's see. And then, um, let's see, we are, I did want to announce our scouted out open house and that's August twenty-fourth from five to six, right here where you'll get to meet, students will come in and get to meet the two of us. And let's see. And as you can see, not a lot has been done in the building and I just met with buildings and grounds today and we ordered a dumpster and will be cleaning out the school and moving around some furniture and getting this place nice and bright for kids to come soon. Those are my updates.
Well, thank you, Jenna. Um, and then under new business, we are now on to the use of surplus funds. So Bob, you, or Lori, that'd be Lori. Lori's here.
Lori's here.
Yahoo.
If we can move, uh, just kind of switch those around, I think it makes more sense to just talk about the fiscal year twenty-three update first and then jump into the use of surplus funds. Um, I'm not sure if I am able to share my screen, Bob. Is that possible?
Bear with me.
Okay.
You should be able to now.
All right, let's see. All right. So you should be able to see the summary of major fund balances?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear yes. Okay.
Yes.
Make it a little bigger there. Okay. So what I sent, uh, what came through your board packet is basically all the funds that Wyndham is managed by Wyndham and the backup that goes with it. So this is for the last fiscal year and where you ended. Where, you know, we haven't really dived into the fiscal year twenty-four yet. You know, that'll come down the road. We'll give you updates as, as those, you know, we start spending some money. So for fiscal year twenty-three, the general fund ended with a fund balance of fifty-one thousand. This was, you know, obviously a loss from the end of, or the start of fiscal year twenty-three, but some of this was expected. We, we were talking about using some fund balance to, uh, you know, do improvements in the kitchen area. Um, there was the boiler. So there was definitely some things that were done with the intention of using some of the fund balance. However, it, it did end up losing almost thirty thousand dollars. So it was a little more than I had anticipated. Um, however, there's still fifty one thousand dollars in surplus, but very important to remember, thirty thousand of that, the board determined to use for buying down the tax rate in, for the fiscal year twenty-four tax, uh, your tax bill that you probably are getting ready to pay soon, right? So, so really, we need to think about it being twenty-one thousand in your mind as you go forward. Um, some other funds there, uh, the C R S funds, that's a very specific to COVID relief. Um, and it needs to be spent in a very specific way. So as soon as we get some expenses that might be able to be charged off there, mainly around like H VAC or some sort of, something like that, or something to do maybe with COVID still, we, we can use up that two hundred and twenty-one dollars. Then down to food service actually ended with a little bit of a surplus. So that is good news. Um, so that will just sit there. It has to be used for food service. So, um, you know, we'll see where this year shakes out as far as, um, you're still getting the food from West River. Um, they are still providing the meals and the admin assistance that you are looking to hire right now will also serve the meals. So they'll be delivered by West River, but served by the administrative assistant that you'll be hiring. Um, the REIT funds, this I sent a message to the board. Um, the, so I had talked a little bit about, um, midway apart, I think through the year that the REIT funds were going away for this year and that is still true. So for fiscal year twenty-four, there is no more refunding for Wyndham School. Wyndham, for those in the audience that haven't really heard of that, it's, um, it's a rural education program that the federal government, doesn't come through the state of Vermont, it comes direct from the Fed. And, uh, they've changed the way that they district the state of Vermont. So there was a lot of districts that lost REIT funding. However, there was some left and that we could draw down to give you that eleven thousand dollar fund balance. Uh, if you recall, in the last couple of years, you've used REIT funding for, to provide more counseling services than what was in the budget. Um, also, the playground, the new playground that is out there, that was a couple of years of REIT funding as well that was used. So it's unfortunate that Wyndham will not get that grant any longer, but, um, it is fortunate that there is some money there now. Um, the Stratton Foundation gave all the schools in their catchment area five hundred dollars to use and Wyndham does still have a little bit of money there to be used. Um, there was a school trip account that was spent out mostly last year and then your capital reserve and you've been contributing this. You can see you contributed ten thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-three to this reserve that is in place to, as a savings account basically for a new bus when that does happen or need to happen. Um, so are there any questions on this? And then I think we can, uh, start to understand how maybe we could use those REIT funds. Hey Abby, I'm not seeing anybody. Hands raised or?
I'm not seeing anybody as well. Uh, anybody in the audience there that have any questions for Lori?
Seems like it's good over here.
So would you like to, uh, expand a little bit in how we can allocate those funds?
Sure. So I know that there was some disappointment in the fact that the counseling was going to revert back to three hours per, I think it's three hours per week, um, which is in your general budget. Um, so it could be used to increase counseling hours and it could be used to fund some sort of art program as well. I think it, it could be used for both depending on what you decide to do. If you, and also what the availability of the counsel, counseling services are. So right now they're committed to the three hours a week. Um, but, uh, you know, I can put Jenna in touch with, uh, Chrissy Weber and to see if that can be increased and what the cost would be. It's a hundred dollars per hour.
Jump in.
I, I already spoke with her. They can't add additional time on their schedule right now.
Ah, okay.
But they can do the three hours.
They can do the three hours, but can't add additional time. All right. Um, so I know that also art was, was also a consideration. So it's, it's really up to the board where they would like to spend that money.
And our teacher is willing to come back and has the time. So we're just waiting on the funding.
You had a hand in Zoom land, but then it disappeared. I didn't catch who it was. So it went, went away. So I'm guessing the question is gone.
Yeah, I don't see it either. We have quite a few people in Zoom.
We do have a hand in the room though.
Oh, go ahead, Jenny.
Hi. Yeah, I, you know, I helped with the lunch, lunches serving in this, in the spring. And I was there when the art teacher was there on Thursdays, I think it was. And the kids, I mean, I can't believe the art classes that she gives. They're wonderful, you know, and she, she's teaching the kids so much about, not just about drawing, but about the history and the, you know, what kind of art and all this. It's just wonderful. I hope that the board will make sure that that art continues. And that's my, my hope.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right. Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we take care of the art teacher and make sure that that's squared away. Um, and Jenna, when you spoke with, with, I can't remember her name right now, regarding counseling. uh regarding counseling, um were did they have um any idea as to, you know, we definitely want to increase and look at what that's gonna be? What other options we could have if they are not available? Did they did they have any recommendations? Um?
Yeah, she was gonna come back to me with that and see if there were alternatives they could offer. And possibly if some of the work could be done via Zoom, then maybe we could set up a station. They're looking into those options. But um I'm waiting for that.
Okay, so um and and Lori, what is the amount? Thank you, Jenna. And what is the amount um needed for miss for the art teacher services?
Um, I am not exactly sure. Um Jenna, did you have, you said you had a conversation with her?
I did, but I didn't talk dollar size. I didn't get to specifics about the money.
Okay, um, I can get that figure what what we paid last year. Um, it's well, I don't think it's gonna be clear in this. I'll have to dig into the financials and look for what we paid exactly. Um, but I don't think it was I don't believe it was over eleven thousand dollars that we paid last year.
The number I have on my notes from the last meeting, I think, is eleven-six, and that may have come from Bridget's request email that she or letter that she sent the board.
For just art or for counseling or?
Yeah, it was a combination.
Yeah, that was a combination was for the.
Because she was asking.
Right. Oh, right. Between seven and eight thousand.
Okay, that sounds outright.
So for uh I I moved to uh allocate between seven to eight thousand dollars of the REAP funds to pay for the art teacher. Can I get a second?
Do you, just a quick side question, do you wanna authorize use up to a certain dollar amount instead?
Um.
Is there?
There's probably a cleaner way to do it, like to authorize up to eight thousand on art instruction.
Is there typically an inflation factor like year over year?
You could say nine. I mean, I I don't know.
Okay, so I moved to spend up to eight thousand dollars allocating REAP funds for the art program. Can I get a second? Perfect. Any discussion? Any hands up? Don't see any. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor. Hi.
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 All right, motion passes. We have our fabulous art teacher.
So.
Excellent. Thank you.
So you do have one hand up and and I also wanted to just ask you, do you wanna authorize money if counseling is available? Up to a certain amount to spend, or do you wanna wait and see what we hear? I'm just worried about the timeliness of that. If you find out something might have to wait for a board meeting to authorize more.
That's a very good point, and if that is an option, I think that would be very wise uh knowing we have the funding. So if we are able to get additional counseling. So in that e- in that email, do does anybody have access to that number? I mean, maybe I can.
I believe it was thirty-six hundred.
Thirty-six hundred.
I think. Yeah, it was a hundred an hour for thirty-six weeks, I think, is what that one additional hour to go from three to four. So I think it was thirty-six hundred for that particular situation.
So uh after I that maybe move the remainder of the REAP funds to put towards counseling after hiring the art teacher. Would that work?
So motioning for, in essence, thirty-three hundred dollars, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, if that's the funding that we have for right now out of that, yes. And then if there's a problem and we need to figure out a different way to fund, then that's a different conversation. But if it's possible that that meets the need and we can get it added, I would like it to be out there that we can get it added, if that makes sense.
Lori, that squares. So you're the way you're reading it, Lori, thirty-three hundred?
Right, yeah. I mean, the art might come in less, so there might be more, so I would really not like to have a number, so to speak. It just, you know, the the between the two that you don't overspend the REAP fund, because if you overspend the REAP fund, then it would come out of your general fund. And that's a decision you can make, but um I would just say, you know, those two items cannot exceed the REAP fund at this point.
So I'll take the guidance on. I think everyone knows the point I'd like to make, but I'm not sure the best wording for it. So Bob, can you help me out here on on a suggestion on words?
So you've already motioned and passed the first part, which is the eight up to eight thousand. So if you had a motion to spend out the remaining REAP money, but not to exceed the total REAP money for purposes of if counseling services are available, something like that?
That sounds good, yeah.
You can just say so moved.
So moved, Bob, so moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I'm not seeing anybody in Zoom land. Anybody in the audience?
No.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor. Hi.
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 Motion passes. Okay, and so that covered Lori, is that the we've got the update and the surplus fund squared away?
It does. It covers it. I'll um connect with Jenna with the art teacher and we'll get things rolling there with a contract in place. And um I will sign the um contract that I have in my email for at least the three hours. Um, we'll get that in place as well. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
From there, but that's all I've got for you tonight, if that's what everybody unless there's any questions. Well, let's take a look here.
Bye. Golly, Lori, I think you might have. I don't think there's anybody in Zoom with questions for you, so.
All right, well, I think I'm done. I will see you all another time.
You got it. Thank you, Lori. Have a great night. Enjoy Battle of Bennington Day tomorrow.
Good. Good enough. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right, moving right along. Um, stronger connections grant to WCSU. Um, is that you, Bob?
Well, so this came up in, I think, some emails, some questions around. Um, Rory had looked into some possible grant funding after the last discussion around the counseling and the art, and she poked something at me that was a a grant that the SU had already received, applied for and received. And so uh we invited Michelle Harchee, uh who is in Zoom land. Michelle Harchee is the Assistant Director for Student Services at Wyndham Central Office. She is the one that is overseeing, I would say, the implementation of this grant, but her role well, I'll let her tell you about her role. Um, and it's it's uh new this year and she's gonna have some um updates on what the implications of this SU grant are for social-emotional learning at Wyndham. So Michelle Harchee from Central Office.
All right, take it away, Michelle.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. It's good to be here. Um, so I am really just here to talk specifically about the Stronger Connections Grant um and to give you a little background and talk about what it can do for our yes SU and Wyndham specifically. Um, so basically, it's a grant that is offered by the federal government under Title IV funds, and it's something that we applied for in the spring. Um, applications needed to be submitted by May twelfth. And we were awarded the grant for the the whole system. It runs a three-year period, but the way they allocate these funds, it's year over year. Um, so we're gonna use that um program, grant program, to create some solutions and guidance for all of our schools. It's gonna include I'll try not to use too many acronyms. Um, but so some of the work we're doing, social, emotional, academic learning. So we have a system in place, um panorama education that we use to gather social, emotional um information from our teachers and students. That started last year and it'll continue this year and it definitely applies to the Wyndham community. We're also gonna use it to create some guidance and and documents and resources for teachers, classroom teachers around social, emotional learning and behavior um support. And so think of this as what we would call universal instruction. So this would be classroom-based resources where the counseling that you're gonna get, those types of services, what are what we would call targeted and intensive. So we're trying to create um information and and resources that will help classroom teachers to support students where they are and if they have needs and to teach them social, emotional skills. Um, and it'll also be used to extend a document that we have that currently is really focused on academics. We call it the Local Comprehensive Assessment System. Um, and we're gonna expand that information, which is a document that all of our teachers use to include um S E L and behavior support. So it's really um a program that's gonna be used at the universal level for all of our schools. It's not specifically um for one school or another, but it's really a way of creating resources and um gathering information in a way that teachers can access it. So from a Wyndham perspective, I would collaborate with Jenna and Marco and really make sure that they understand what's happening, um that they can have access to these resources, that we can implement them in the classroom. Um, and they'll also be part of the group that we work with to gather feedback and understand student needs and so that's basically kind of a high-level overview. Is there, are there any specific questions that I might be able to answer?
So I just wanna be clear. So we're we're not talking about money flowing into the Wyndham budget. We're talking about services flowing in, access to things from the SU office facilitated by Michelle and Jenna.
Correct, and it's it's because it's federal funding. Um, it's very specific. So when we applied for the grant, we we laid out very specific deliverables and that's what we are held accountable to. Um, and the funds have to get distributed um in relation to what was approved. So it's really hard to make changes at this point, um maybe year over year. So after we go through this year and we create this baseline of guidance, um, there's probably a slight opportunity to change it, but it's still um an SU-wide uh program, basically. So i- we're creating assets that apply to all teachers in all classrooms.
So Michelle, is panorama part of this grant funding or is that a separate program?
It it's, we had it last year and some of the funds will be used to work with a consultant that we use to um that supports the SEAL team. So we do have panorama education, so we'll make sure that, you know, as part of your training that you're in the next few days, um, we'll make sure that you have access with I T.
So most of the resources coming from the grant fund, I know they're S E L, but what what what's the like the bulk of this, the money invested in? What resources?
It's services, supplies, and staff training. So we have that um SEAL group, so that social, emotional, academic learning group, which is um and we would wanna represent representative from Wyndham, so Jenna, it's probably gonna be you um to participate in in um using this panorama education, sending out the surveys to your teachers, your families. Um, and that's something that we started last year and it's gonna continue this year. And we work with an outside consulting group to facilitate that.
Michelle, can you say a little bit about what is in, I mean, panorama is the tool to do the survey, but it also has some resources built into it that these guys will be able to utilize in the classroom, right? Can you say a little bit about that?
Yeah, so there's um, it's called the Panorama Playbook. And there's seven, over seven hundred lessons in there that are specifically geared towards social, emotional skills. Um, and you can look, you can um search for lessons by learning goal, developmental level. Um, and I can definitely show that to you, Jenna, when I'm popping over tomorrow. Um, but you'll be able, you can pull it, the lesson, it has the actual lesson that you would give to the students. It has a way to assess that lesson and any resources that are available and all of that is at your fingertips.
So the the old model of like the school counselor does this thing in a silo is is really kind of going by the wayside. There might be some, as you described, this sort of intensive work that a counselor might do with some individual kids or a group of kids. But really, this S E L work is integrated into the normal classroom setting and with Marco and with Jenna.
Right, and you know, the idea is social, emotional skills can be embedded into math lessons and reading lessons. And so, you know, the this is a resource that we have available to all teachers that they can figure out how to incorporate it into those lessons.
Thank you, Michelle. Does that uh, does that cover the uh update on the implications for Wyndham, would you say? Or is there more to that uh part of the agenda?
Really, it's just that you'll have access to this information that we're creating for all schools and it's gonna definitely, you know, we encourage collaboration. Um, and.
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that. Um, and can that, I'll connect with Jenna to make sure that she has access to all of these resources.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I'm moving on to staffing update.
Right, so we, this, I mean, Jenna already mentioned this, but we um she did make a job offer to Marco. Um, Marco, is it pronounced Lazen, I think, is that correct? Uh, who was in the Zoom with us actually, um and he has accepted that position. Um, we have extended a contract. Um, the board doesn't need to take action on that because it's a principal hiring. So the superintendent and the principal are the co-signers on a contract with Marco. Uh, as Jenna mentioned, he joined the rest of the new SU hires today for the next couple of days are are our new teacher induction sessions where they learn about all the different systems that exist. Um, they learn about sort of philosophical underpinnings of what it means to be part of the SU. And um and also get to meet um their mentors. And so um they're both, they're both actually part of that process as new teachers in the SU. Um, so um that started today. So please so now that that is finalized, you have your second staff member and as Jenna mentioned earlier, we're in the process of working through the the support staff for the admin assistant. So I don't know if this is the time to go back to Crystal's questions perhaps. Um, Crystal, can you remind me exactly what you're asking on this? Cause I
So um myself and many other parents are wondering if Marco has ever worked in an elementary school with elementary kids. Is he a licensed teacher? Because quite frankly, this will be the third year in a row with no licensed teacher. Um, and concerns around the posts we're seeing on front porch forum and Facebook.
So I mean, I I can talk about licensure a little bit. Um, and I guess what I'll say is that a teacher is considered licensed if they either hold a license or they hold a provisional license or if they hold an emergency license. And obviously, the license, the main route is something that experienced educators get, that's what I hold. Um, and um that is the goal, right? Uh, but provisional licensure and emergency licensure are alternatives to get someone who isn't currently licensed or isn't currently licensed in Vermont um the opportunity to to be a practitioner in a legal sense in a classroom. So they're considered licensed once they've achieved that. And I can say, and um Jenna and I have talked a little about this with her. Jenna has out-of-state licenses. Not currently in Vermont at this point, but we're working through that process right now. She, because she holds it in another state, there's a reciprocity agreement. So it's just a matter of like some hoops to get that swung into Vermont. Um, Marco is is also unlicensed in Vermont. Um, and he, so I'm going through the provisional application process for him. And so under the provisional process, uh teachers are given um two years to complete whatever steps they need to complete to get the full licensure. Uh, those steps will depend on where the person begins, right? Um, and which pathway they take. So there are multiple path, they they can take coursework and sort of do it the old-fashioned way, if you will, and enroll in a program. They can um do a transcript review, which means we're looking at their transcripts from some other place and trying to determine whether those courses meet uh what the Vermont licensing department requires. Uh, and there's also a peer review process. The peer review process is that you go into it with the understanding that you have other experiences that aren't teaching but that you believe are similar to teaching and that you build a portfolio that compares the Vermont teaching standards to your experiences and collection of stuff. Could include transcripts, it could be experiences, what have you. And then you submit it to a panel. And then you submit it to a panel, and Vermont educators sit on that panel. And you make a presentation and they grant you, or they send you back to do more work, depending on whether or not they say you've met the standards. The peer review process is an incredibly rigorous one. It's actually one of the harder ones, and in most cases it takes at least two years. So once Marco's application is submitted, he will have to choose the pathway that he is going to take to do that. I'm not going to get into the specifics of him as a, as a matter of personnel, but, but he will be a provisional licensee to start. I will also say, I can't speak to what the past happened, but I can tell you that last year you did have at least a provisionally licensed teacher. And one who was licensed. So they both were, from the standpoint of the Agency of Education, legally licensed teachers.
So my point kind of was, we've had provisional license for three years. I should have clarified.
Absolutely, sure. And I think, and I'll say this, like, so the superintendent is the one who has to ask the state for provisional licensure. I have submitted in my six weeks, 10 applications to the state from across the SU. So it's incredibly common right now because there's a huge shortage of teachers. And so people are coming to the profession from other avenues, like Marco. So, and sometimes it's people from out of state, like Jenna, who needs to, you know, go through that process. But it's, it's incredibly common. It's become way more common than it was 10 years ago, and certainly before COVID. And so that's a process that the principal then oversees with that candidate, and then I have final oversight on, are they meeting the benchmarks along the way? And after, I think it's after a year, if they, if they are not making the progress that the AOE has deemed they should based on the plan and the path they chose, the AOE can pull that provisional license. So there are oversights that go into place from the principal, the superintendent, and from the AOE on those things. But it is not exactly the same as walking in with a teacher who's gone through a traditional college program for education. I will grant you that, it is different, the way that I went through back in the day. But it is, it is not uncommon these days. And as I said, I've submitted numerous ones from Marlboro, from River Valleys, from West River, and from here. So every district in the SU has, has at least one person who's going through that process. I don't know if that answers everything you want or not.
No, I appreciate the explanation. Can you touch base on our concerns with getting here?
So I, I would say this, I'm not going to get into what Marco's personal life is like, but what I will tell you is this, if you have a staff member that can't come to work and they can't fulfill the needs of their contract, then there'll be disciplinary action taken against that person. And that's all I can say. And so I will work with that person's boss, who'll be Jenna, to ensure that that any employee does that, whether it's Marco, the admin assistant they hire, or frankly, if it's Jenna, then I'll be dealing with it. This is a normal proceedings and, and this, this is what happens. So that oversight will be there. So yeah, I guess that's probably the best answer to that, if that helps.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
I, I just don't want to get into Marco's personal life, this seems like a little bit more than we should. I know there's been a lot of publicity. It's been a lot of conversation online about Marco and what's going on with him. And I just, I just want to say, like, to that end, I, I think that we need to give Marco and Jenna an opportunity to see what they can do here. And I think it's really important for us as a community to be welcoming of him and of her, and to ensure that we give them the best possible situation they have to, to start off the school year and see where that goes. And we'll be what we'll be, so. Abby, you do have two, no, I'm sorry, one hand. Bridget Blanchard's hand is up in Zoom land.
Oh, go ahead, Bridget.
Oh, sorry, I'm muted. So this question is for Bob. So how about, how many schools have you worked in over your career?
Uh, one, two, three. Well, five, but one of them was twice, Leland and Gray. But yeah, five different schools in Vermont and Massachusetts.
Okay, and so to the best of your knowledge, have any other schools you've worked in have 50% of their staff on license?
Well, again, uh, just.
Or more than 50, because, because the teaching principal isn't completely licensed.
Right.
Has that ever happened in any school you've ever worked in?
Well, I wanted, I don't want to, I don't want to debate the merits of the question, but once provisional license is granted, then they are licensed. And so I don't want people to think of it as a provisional license means the person's not licensed. It means they're provisionally licensed. So the, the Agency of Ed recognizes that as a, as a valid license. That being said, your broader question is, I've never worked in a school that had a staff of two. So like, the, the whole, it's all, I mean, all that is new to me. So I'm like, that's, you know, I've worked in, in primarily high schools or middle high schools my entire career. So with Leland and Gray being the smallest, and so, yeah, I've never seen anything that's similar to what you guys have here. In lots of ways, I would say. So that, I mean, that's, that's, I don't, it doesn't really answer what you're saying, but I, I, I think you understand where I'm getting at with that.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, are there any other questions for the staffing update? Okay, is there any action that we need to take during this update?
Well, because the contract is not, is, the board does not sign the contract in Wyndham. That's been the history here for what I understand is that the, it's always the principal who's making that. Oh, I should say, actually, let me say one more thing about staffing that I want to point out. I did mention that there's a mentoring program through the SU that Marco will end up with a, a mentor teacher. And I, I don't know off the top of my head who that is, and it doesn't matter, it's somebody who's been carefully selected by Jen McHusick, who manages that program. But I did want to add that Jen and I have been in conversations about a principal mentor as well. And one of the, I'm going to name drop here a little bit, because I think this, this potential candidate who we're trying to connect with is someone that's known in the Wyndham community. But I've been having some negotiations with John Doty about potentially being a mentor for Jenna. You didn't connect today. So we're going to be, we're going to meet and they're going to, he's going to be her, because the new principals in the state of Vermont have, have to have a mentor. And so that, I, I just knew John had been here at one point. I have a great deal of respect for John. I think he, he's the only principal in the state of Vermont to win Principal of the Year twice, which is incredible, down at Whitingham and over in Belles Falls, and he was principal here. I don't know for how long, and it was while I wasn't in the district. But I have a ton of respect for the guy. And so I'm hoping that that will be a good relationship. And then the additional piece that I've been letting boards know about this, because the SU has a lot of new principals in it this year. Some first-year principals, some like Jenna who are experienced other places but are new to us. We have put together, Jen McHusick and I, a coaching group of all the elementary new hires, new principal hires. It's basically everybody with Scotty from, from West River. Everyone else is either going to be new as a principal or new to their position. So we've created with the Vermont Principal Association a coaching group. Erica McLaughlin, who is the Assistant Associate, Assistant Executive Director at the BPA, Vermont Principal Association, is a former, also Elementary Principal of the Year from Randolph School. She works for the BPA now, and we have contracted with her through the SU to work with all the elementary principals. So they'll have monthly meetings, as well as the monthly meetings with the mentor, the principal mentor, and of course, the teaching mentor as well. So there's going to be a lot of supports in place for all the staff here in Wyndham in lots of different ways. So I wanted to make sure you guys knew that. And of course, we have a similar secondary level one for the two new people at Leland and Gray with another BPA person who's a secondary principal. So just wanted you guys to understand there's lots of supports that we're putting in place in general, because we know that it's a tough job. And yeah, you need to have a, you need to have a group of people you can talk to and get support from. So just wanted you guys to be aware of that as well.
That is awesome, Bob. That, that's a lot of collaboration and it sounds beautiful. So thank you for sharing that, that's great.
Yep.
Is, is there any other questions?
Yeah, none here.
Does Crystal, Crystal, did you feel that your, your questions were answered? Or is there anything else that we can?
Nope.
She's good.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. There's a lot of great information shared at this meeting. Everyone I know has been working really hard and it's, it's a beautiful thing. So thank you all. Tomorrow is Battle of Bennington Day in Vermont, so some folks may have the day off, you may find some businesses are closed, but enjoy, celebrate, be healthy and be well. So I will make a motion.
Hold on, hold on. You do have a hand up, you do have a hand up. Crystal's hand just went up. I think she wants the day off tomorrow, I'm not sure.
I'm taking it off. Is she going to give Marco the opportunity to speak?
Crystal's asking if you'd like to give Marco the opportunity to say hello.
Oh, Marco, would you like the opportunity to say hello?
Sure.
Okay, you're good.
Hi, everyone. I'm, I'm Marco. Crystal, just to speak to your concern about my ability to make it to and from school. I'd be happy to give you guys a little bit of context on what that social media post was about, or those posts were about. My partner, she is a mental health care worker, and we share a car. And so I will 100% be able to make it to work every single day. But the transport for us to travel back and forth to school and for her to make it to work is a lot of time in the car. So I've made those posts with the hope of finding an alternative way for me to make it up to the school so that we didn't have to share the car and we wouldn't have to both be inconvenienced by the amount of time that we would have to share that particular vehicle. So it wasn't necessarily something where I was saying, oh, I don't have a car, or I, oh, I can't drive. But it's saying, well, she has the car for her transportation. Let me figure out a way I can do something that's alternative, that's kind of mindful of the environment, my footprint, and get to know the community a little bit better. So that was the real intention of what I was saying. And I'm actually not on social media, so hearing this kind of, the chatter around it is, it's, it's I, it's a little bit out of my control because I had people posting on my behalf. I'm really excited to join the community. I do have a master's degree in systems engineering. I've done a lot of, a lot of scientific work, a lot of mathematics. And I also have done a lot of work with Boy Scouts of America. I've been a scout master for many years. I've done a lot of volunteer work with youth art installations. And yeah, robotics teams, I've been a coach for a local robotics team in a different school district. So to answer your question, yes, I have worked with children at elementary level, and although I do have a, I have a provisional license, it is a license. And I've worked with kids a lot, and I will be able to make it to school. So I completely appreciate your concerns. And I get it, were I in your shoes, I would be, I would have the exact same questions. And I appreciate you just voicing them. And I'm excited to join you guys. And I'm really looking forward to this year and getting to meet you guys in person as well. So thank you for bringing this up. I'm, I'm pumped. And if you know anybody who's moving or going up Route 30 and is carpooling or open to carpooling, please let me know, because that's the type of thing that I would be interested in and getting to know other members of the community. So keep that in mind. But either way, I'll be there, I'll see you there. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Marco, and welcome aboard.
Nice. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm looking in Zoom land. I don't see any other hands. Is there anybody that has questions maybe for Marco or anything? You know, we kind of went to public comment, but there's been a lot of information shared, so just want to make sure everyone has their chance to speak and ask questions before our next meeting.
You have nothing here.
All right, well, not hearing anything from, we can, I make a motion to adjourn at 19:42, 7:42 PM. Can I get a second?
Is that your motion?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. Pleasure to see everyone's faces here. You have a wonderful rest of your night.